Get a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Motion made by Rob and seconded by John to approve the agenda as written. All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Have a chance to read the minutes.
How many need to spell right now, R-I-E?
Oh. Where's that at, Franny?
In the second.
Oh.
All of them.
All of them.
Except for the first one, I did it right there.
Yes, you did.
Okay, I'll do that. I apologize, Franny.
Not a problem. Not any problem at all.
I'm gonna wait for the agenda. Right, through the minutes. I'll second that.
Motion made by Darrell and seconded by Franny to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid. You have a chance to go through them, Franny.
Need some recycling bins on.
Well, I was gonna check, that's a, one recycling bin? Cause that's all the invoice said was one.
No, I don't think that's one.
Cause it said the S's and that's why. It only showed one on the invoice, I forgot to call Rick to see for sure how many they'd actually.
Yeah, I better check on that, too. I don't know exactly how many that is. I know we charge $10 or $15 deposit for them, for anybody that comes and gets them. I'll check on that, though.
That's my, I'm gonna call Rick on that and I forgot to.
No, I think that's a little expensive for one.
Yeah, well, I was thinking it was one big, well, on four rollers. That's what I was thinking, it probably was, if it was just one.
No, I think those are the little ones, cause we've been having people come in and get more. We've had some people come to town and.
More needs are on. You know, possibly not.
I would have to check on that, Darrell. I doubt whether there's a very good one, though.
What was the extra police services for?
That was when Darren has a street march.
We haven't had a fight there the last two years.
Was there one this year, too?
Yeah.
Not exactly there, but people that were there.
Oh, yeah.
Moved up the block from one place.
I was there till 10 o'clock, I didn't see any policeman there.
So, do you wanna hold off on paying that, John, until we get a report?
No, I just, I thought maybe that's what it was and then.
Yeah, they were, I mean, I saw they were in town. I saw they were, a couple right around vehicles, they were in town, so. When I saw them, I kinda remembered that's what was going on.
Do you want to request that there's just two of them instead of three?
That's what we probably could.
Overkill almost. In some cases may not.
I was livening up a lot after I left, didn't need any.
Well, they had, didn't have a wedding or something over here, too, at the same time? Maybe after they got out of there.
Well, that could be the last two years.
I don't know, I went through here, I don't know what time it was, that was 9:10 o'clock, something like that.
Yeah, Main Street's pretty busy.
Yeah. You get a motion to pay the bills, or as printed?
Suppose our natural gas, we didn't probably take in a lot of money in natural gas again this month, but we paid $55,000.
And most of that's WIE.
That's probably the WIE, cause the other one was.
Forty-eight hundred was, a little over forty-eight hundred was WIE. Or forty, forty thousand, excuse me.
Oh, we had a bill last.
That, that'll come up in the clerk's report, but since you brought it up, WIE has a new guy paying the bills, so we didn't get paid when we usually do for this. And that's the reason why our natural gas fund was messed up on our last clerk's report.
But we paid for the gas.
But we.
And got paid for it.
Exactly. And we've talked to them about that and that'll probably change back to the way we've been getting paid.
Are we billed twice a month, or?
Well, yeah, we're billed for our demand, kind of.
Commodity and then reserve.
Right.
Okay, cause I'm gonna give something like a $5,000 bill.
Yeah, that's our demand.
Two weeks ago.
And then, we probably, we probably don't use $4,000 worth as a city this, this time of year. But WIE uses an awful lot.
Is this demand charge, is that figured into our gas price then, or?
Yes.
That demand charge, that on WIE line is both?
Both.
Everything.
Five thousand dollars every year?
Mm-hmm. This time of year. It jumps up during the winter, Darrell.
On for the residential.
Yep.
The city's portion, that last month was thirty-seven hundred.
You guys, since we're bringing this up right now, should we, next, next meeting, should we go through the cost of our gas? That's something that you guys asked me to do when you, when you were interviewing me. Do you wanna go through what it costs us? And I know you guys talked about the storage that we have out there, if that's doing us any good. I've talked to those guys quite a few times and I have a pretty good feel on it, so if that's something that you wanna do at the next meeting, I would be glad to talk to you about that.
Yeah. That's, we shouldn't know where we're standing now.
It should be leveled out now, so that we're back to balance again, you know? I know that when we take off in the season, all of a sudden, we're using a lot and then we don't pay for it till a month later and then it lags over a month in the springtime.
Yep.
But then, you know, this is a month where we should be.
These next few months, really, we should be leveled off.
Should be real balanced now, as far as the city's usage, anyway.
We'll put that on the agenda for next, next time.
I'm gonna wait for, pay the bills.
I'll second it. Bill by Darrell, seconded by Rob to pay the bills. All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Say, before we move on to old business, or maybe it's under clerk's report response, we should have made our year-end transfers before. I totally forgot about this, this was the last meeting, this was it.
Should we do that on the clerk's report?
Yeah.
We gotta, you know, cause we have to transfer, I think in some places, like the.
Yeah, I, I.
Minutes of last meeting or something like that, or someplace I read where we had to transfer. Some money.
John brought that up.
Yeah, I told you, I didn't even bring my information.
Need to transfer $18,062 from the debt fund service, or to the debt fund service, whatever it is. I need to have that in the minutes of the last meeting.
That service fund needs to transfer $5,000.
And our general fund weighs in the hole, too.
Any old business? It's gotta be done before the 30th, right?
Yeah, you want me to run it and grab that, or wait till they come back to you? Won't take you a minute, just go get it.
The meter cost is really nothing but information, John, so if you wanna do that, I can talk to the guys about that, it's up to you.
Okay.
The reason I have that on there.
Would it be on last week's last meeting's report?
Yeah, but I wrote them all down on my.
Oh, okay.
Let's see, I got the.
Uh, the reason why I put the, the meter cost on there is, cause I wanted you guys to know what our $5300 was gonna be spent on, and if you look at the sheet, it's got my name at the top of it. Right, yeah, you're all looking at it. This is the kinda information that we have to get into a spreadsheet and then we have to put that onto Michelle's computer and get those two things synced together. And my feeling on this is, if we did it, we would probably mess something up. Larry Chapman's done it before, quite a few times, so this is what he's gonna be doing for us, syncing that information, and he's gonna be here tomorrow to go through that with us, so we have a more smooth transition. So, that's really all I had on that. Meter cost.
No, including that $300.
Yep. So, that was basically just information, nothing there, other than that. Uh, the well is also just information. I talked to, well, John at the last meeting said that we needed to get a copy of a video to a guy, and I did that, sent it to him, haven't heard anything back, he probably just got it late last week. So, we'll keep bringing the information on what that guy says. Can't tell you what his name was, but he worked for Lane Christiansen Company out of Des Moines. Uh, then the next thing I did was talk to Rural Water. The guy initially told me that this is absolutely not gonna be feasible, it's gonna cost way too much. But then he thought, since they have a six-inch pipe over here, three-quarters of a mile away from us, it might not be a bad idea. Talked to a couple of engineers about that idea and they gave me some information. They said, before you do, look onto Rural Water, really think about it, cause once you do, you are stuck, basically. They've got ya. You can't apply for grants for updating your wells or your sewage, because you already have a viable source of water, and then they can basically do what they want with the rates. So, I don't know that that's the way that we wanna go.
I don't think so.
And Rick has talked about this with me before, too. He's had some dealings with Rural Water, he doesn't think it's a good idea, and now that, you know, talking to a couple of engineers, I don't either. So, just some more information for you guys. Like I told you last week, or last meeting, we do have another engineer looking at our project, and he's putting some information together, so. Once we get that, then I'll bring you what MSA said, what this guy said, and we'll.
Is Sunquist or who's?
Um, actually, it's Snyder and Associates.
Snyder and Solke.
Out of Atlantic. Dave Sturm is a kid that I went to school with and he's done quite a bit of preliminary work for the city. I don't know that they've done too much work, actually, for the city, but. So, that's all I had on meter cost and well water. I don't know if you guys want any other information, if you have some questions about it, let me know, and then we'll just have to wait for John to get his information.
What do we, you got wastewater generator on, what's wastewater about then?
Well, that's, we've had this on for the last three meetings, Ray, so we just kinda left it the same, though. The well wastewater generator.
I know, I know the generator, yeah, we was talking about the.
If we, if we put a well in, we kinda wanna put a generator right there with it.
And, yeah, that'll have to stay there.
Big motor is that one there?
Yeah.
It's a whole dog, too, so it's, it's liable.
Yeah, we actually have smaller, there are pumping stations, those stations do. That's the main one we're gonna have to deal with.
You can pump that out.
Yeah.
Well, cookies and, and. I'll bet it on that all day.
He's still a bypass in that one down.
Yeah, they're still bypassing there. They were coming down through the mains.
Yeah.
It's too high. It's too high. Actually, it was, last time we boked it with the mower, it didn't turn on, and they thought it was on. That's the first time it's been running in years.
You're talking about their expenses?
Yeah, it's got a, it's got a, it's a bypass that goes through and then for some reason that don't keep up, then it's supposed to out.
And the project out is?
That's done.
That's all done?
Yep. Done, complete, turns out really good.
Hey, John, I just updated these guys on the cost of the meters and the well water. Talked to a couple of, well, I sent that video off that you asked me to do. And talked to engineer about Rural Water, talked to Rural Water about Rural Water. Don't think it's really the best way to go, cost-wise, and then they kinda got ya. Once, once they, once they hook up, you're stuck, basically. It's last week. That's what, that's what this engineer told me, is he said, talk to a couple of towns about it before you do it, cause he'd heard that one other town in southern Iowa was not very happy at all, that they did it. And then, I guess we can go to clerk's report, since there's really nothing, nothing that we have to vote on. One thing that I wanted to say before John said something is, we've got a CD that was due, or that came due yesterday, and that's for, says on here, bond, bond interest. So, that'll go into, we'll cash that and just put that right into our general fund. So, that can, and that, that amount is seventeen, or $18,711.33, so that can cover our $18,062 that we need to transfer into the debt service fund.
What bond, was that on bond interest?
Doesn't say.
That's the, that's the portion of the community building that we, so this, this CD came from Gil Renzi's money, and then we had it mature, so it was pretty much equal whatever the community building amount was, cause it was bound not callable until a year from now.
That's one of the bonds callable with the homeowner, whatever, but I didn't think we had anything callable for.
Not till, I think June 1st, 2012.
2012, okay, that's a later than that issue, but. Anything else on the clerk's report?
Well, we probably should make these transfers. I need to come over and double check the numbers. On the, on the TIF, we need to transfer from someplace, $18,062 into the debt service fund for the, no, I'm sorry, that's not TIF, that's the. Back it up.
How would we have access, and we had access in water, and what else?
Okay, the first motion should be to transfer $22,653.25. I'll make this motion. From the tax incremental financing fund to the debt service fund.
What was the number again?
Two-two, two-two, six-five-three.
Six-five-three, twenty-five. That's how much money we brought in on our residential TIF district. That plus our debt service tax. I should have painted myself better notes here. Anyway, now we need to transfer $24,067.84. Probably that's, make the motion, transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund. $24,067.84, you want these as one motion or each one for, at a time?
I think we should do each one.
Should each one separate, or?
So, let's, let's go back to the first one. John motioned to transfer $22,653.25 from TIF to debt service.
John, and that was motion, is your second then?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by John, seconded by Franny, to transfer $22,653.25 to, from the TIF to the debt service. All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
That should give our ending fund balance for tax incremental financing to be zero. And then debt service, we paid out on the, on the community building and the REC notes, a total of something like $35,000, I can't add that up in my head. And we brought in on debt service, $13,062.5. The only debt service tax we have is that 150,000 of paying REC. So, in effect, we've got the principal and interest on the community building in our debt service fund. We raised that money, put it into contributions into the general fund when Gil Renzi gave it to us, but then it's not receipts, it's cash. The receipts went in the general fund a year ago. I assume we should, the motion should be to transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund, And that'll get our debt service fund to zero.
$67.84?
Uh, $24,067.84. If we add 24 and 191. Somehow that puts our general fund in the hole, 215,000. Some notes that I made on here was, we paid all of our insurance out of the general fund, which we could've allocated to the other fund, but then we would just transfer less money, whatever, $39,000. I don't know. I don't really have any other. Great thoughts on the subject. Actually didn't do a lot of analyzing on this. What was the park renovation expense was $70,000?
That was, uh, the equipment.
Oh, was that the playground?
Yep.
Well, that came in a previous year, too. And we had Gus's property, for $50,000. There's 120 of it, right next to you, and then the insurance is 38, so. All right. So, we took care of tax incremental financing and debt service, so.
We need a motion yet for transfer.
To the general fund.
From the general fund.
To debt service.
To debt service.
For the year, the electric fund was $16,000 in the hole. Gas was 35, but probably not, because we didn't have a receipt in there yet.
Actually, we got a, we got a $74,000 payment that'll be added to that.
Okay.
So, that'll be somewhere around $36,000, $37,000 in that account now. And there'll probably be at least one more before the end of the year.
Water made 20, sewer loss 14. And garbage, 105. Now, I'm looking at, I'm looking at May 31st here, today. Well, June's gonna come out different. I have no idea where June is gonna end up. And you really shouldn't leave the general fund in the hole, but I'm not even sure what we should.
Transfer out and do it?
Yeah, transfer it out. Quite a negative if you take out electric. But we had a lot of capital projects in electric. That's why that one was in the hole.
For the year in the hole, but it's not in the hole overall, right?
No, it's, oh, the balance is on 650,000, I should be telling you that, too, I guess.
Now, see, and the balance, the balance in the water was pretty good, too, wasn't it?
Yeah, and balance in the water is 219.
See, there's two of that.
And then sewer was 27, garbage is a negative 69. Lack of any rational thinking, maybe we should take 100 electric and 100 water.
Unless we know. So, it's a year occurrence.
We will have a capital project on water next year, but.
But if we do, we probably have to, probably bond of any way.
Yeah.
Talking about the well? I've been told that the CDBG grant, the more you apply for it, the better chance you have of getting it. So, since we applied last year and didn't get it, this year we have a better chance of getting that grant.
You didn't go ahead with that one.
So, that'll help. Well, that could be, but.
Yeah, it is. They can afford it.
So, what do we have now, then?
So, we need to still do, transfer $24,067.84, correct?
From general fund to?
To. Oh, didn't service.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't make a motion.
I'll make that motion, transfer $24,067.84 from general fund to debt service.
Is there?
I'll second that.
Okay, John. Make a motion by Franny, seconded by John, transfer $24,067.84 from general fund to debt service tax, or debt service fund, I guess, isn't it? All in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, we got a transfer.
I wanna add something here, I skipped over this. We wanna pay, this should be part of our bills. We wanna pay the electric. We wanna pay the electric fund, you might make a note of this on the bills maybe. Then I'll make a motion, we're gonna pay the electric fund nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents. For their TIF certificate, they certify, and that'll be just.
Cost again, nine thousand.
Yeah, it's gonna be an expenditure to the debt service and a revenue to TIF, or to electric. Nine thousand, eight forty-seven, forty. And that's to pay one of those certificates. And then we wanna do the same thing with the water.
Not the same number though, right?
No, I'm working on that. Um, twelve thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. And eighty-five cents. Yeah. So if you want a motion, I'm making the motion that we approved the bills between the debt service fund. To the electric fund of nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven, forty. And the water fund of twelve, eight hundred and five, eighty-five.
Okay, now is it the TIF fund or the debt service fund?
Debt service fund.
It's two electric, two water fund and debt service, okay.
What we have to do is, we had to transfer the money to the debt service because they're general bonds, general obligation bonds, and then we pay it back to the gas and water. I'm sorry, electric and water. And, um. I don't know what the account would be. Just put it under interest income. At work.
Can we get this in form of motion?
Yeah, I mean that in the form of motion.
Okay, is there a second?
You gotta get it all rolled down.
Do you wanna re, let me re-say that.
No, I had it all rolled down.
So this little baby right here's for.
Okay, motion made by John, second by Daryl to transfer nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents to electric and debt service and twelve thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and eighty-five cents to water from debt service. Correct, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want you to write a check though, I just transferred, I want you to write a check.
Write a check from, from debt service to?
From the general fund.
Yeah, as part of the bills, right?
Yeah, this is part of the bills.
All in favor, signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, we got one more transfer yet?
Yeah, I'll just make a motion to transfer a hundred thousand from the electric. And a hundred thousand from the water. Into the general fund.
Okay, second to that.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the electric fund to the general fund and a hundred thousand dollars from the water fund to the general fund. All in favor, signify with say an aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Any more transfers we're gonna make, that is. Apparently.
That's about two weeks' worth of work, Ray, so.
Yeah. There's no more, no more transfers?
No, I think that should do it, I'm sorry, I was, I was off and coming up.
Okay, moving on to new business, electric.
Well, Mark couldn't be here tonight, he didn't feel very well. Um, but, uh, ten days ago, Rick helped me out a little bit here. Ten days ago, we had a transformer go out at Costa Green. So Mark got it put in a couple of days later, they didn't need it right away, so it worked out pretty good. But Mark thinks that we should have some transformers on hand. And, uh, he's told me a couple of times what he thinks, and I don't remember what the sizes are.
What's the power voltage anything we have on hand? We have none of them on hand right now, come fall if one of them goes out, Costa Green's gonna be all torn.
Twelve-five. Come twelve-five, yeah.
That particular transformer was fourteen hundred, I think it was.
He told me the night too that they should have, we thought should have one on hand, it couldn't depend on Lakeview all the time to.
They're two, they're two years old, he thought, and that's the reason why he didn't have one on hand, because he didn't think he needed to, but.
You talked to him about that?
Huh?
You talked to him about that?
No.
I haven't talked to him.
A little bit. A little bit, yeah, probably.
Yeah, it was bad, because we lost our three page out there.
Good thing you had a ground man there.
Yeah. I think he, another thing I think he needs to do is go to school to learn a little bit more about that voltage. I think that's kinda what happened there was. I think, I think he did something he wasn't supposed to. Without trying to know more about it. It caused a blow, I mean, it was bad. And I think that's what happened, I think he should get to a class on, about two seventy-seven, get a little knowledge about it.
I think that's probably a good idea, but Mark just wanted me to, to let you guys know that he wants you guys to start thinking about having a few transformers on hand. And I know I've heard Franny say before that we need to get a transformer on hand for our.
Yes.
For our, uh, substation up here.
Looking for cost of those?
Well, that's the, kinda the reason why Mark wanted to be here tonight, and he, I don't know what happened today, I mean, they were pretty busy today, obviously, we had some issues, but. Um, he, he left me a note and said he didn't feel very good, so.
I think there's three different sizes, twenty-five, a fifty, and a hundred.
I remember him saying twenty-five and fifty, but I.
I think there's a hundred, a couple hundreds out there too, for them days out there. For the warehouse, he.
He'd be up on the hill. You don't wanna buy a spare up in that low.
Huh?
You don't wanna buy a spare, you want it to bounce below it.
No. That's a big one.
Well, he wanted to, he, at first wanted a couple of spares for our pad mounts too, and then he talked to an engineer and they said. You don't have very much trouble with those, so it's probably not a good idea, those are pretty expensive, those you get up into the ten, fifteen thousand dollar range. And the engineer said, you don't probably have to have one of those, but, uh. Ones for out south probably is not a bad idea, to have one or two of those on hand.
And you get one of every sizes more than, I mean.
Twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred. I would think that'd be plenty too. But I think what we should do is, you guys know this, next meeting, Mark will be here, he'll be able to tell us a little bit more.
Yeah, if you get the prices of, of what we're looking at.
Right, and I think you, he wanted to work on that, and he couldn't get that done today, I'm sure, so.
Another option would be to find somebody that carries, you know, like Lakeview or REC or something, talk to them. You get one from them and replace it. Instead of, uh, inventory of them that might not ever be used and end up six years old and won't be on very near.
Yeah.
Right now you have the inventory of, of transformers down there that's unreal, but most of them are.
All small ones first.
Okay, if we don't know if they're any good, so I can use them on a pole.
They're old.
Yeah.
Right?
Need a bunch you got from Lakeview and God knows where to get them all from, but use them.
Okay, so you guys just keep that kinda in mind. Uh, then, uh, what I wanted to talk about here was. Um, this electrical inspection. And, uh, Mark would've helped me out with this too, but he's not gonna be here, obviously. Just wanna point a few things out, let you guys know that, that Mark's doing a pretty good job. Um, if you look on the very first page, down at the bottom, it says page one of three. Uh, probable violations, one through seven, or actually one through six. Um, it's all cable TV stuff. And that's all gonna be taken care of as soon as the fiber optics gets hooked up, they're gonna take all that stuff down, so. Those six things won't be on here anymore. And, uh, you know, he told me, I talked to him about the pole, number seven. Uh, he knows about that, and he's gonna get that taken care of, he just needs to get a day when him and Rick can do it, it's kind of a two-man job. And then, uh, if you guys go back to, uh, the second page, one of three. Where at the top it says Iowa Utility Board Safety and Engineering Section. There's a whole bunch of questions, this is kinda what they do their, uh, inspection on. There's, uh, thirty-one questions, and out of those thirty-one questions, there's one no, number seventeen. And, uh, I didn't know what that meant, but if you look on the back, there's a comment, number seventeen, the utility did not follow its inspection schedule. What happened was, last year, they decided not to inspect Mark. Um, which would've been map four. So, uh, Mark kept doing map four, 'cause he thought this year that they would come back and inspect map four, well, they just skipped map four completely and went to map five, and Mark didn't have map five completely done. Um, he was actually ahead of schedule in his mind, but since they skipped map four, he was behind schedule, so. What he's gonna do is, by next year at this time, he's gonna have map five and six done, and then the guy said that'll be just fine.
What does that, map four, five, and sixteen mean then?
Different areas of town?
They pick out, yeah, they pick out a section of town, and I don't know how big it is for sure, maybe you know, Rick, I don't know.
There's a map in there, it's got, like, the new addition would be one, and then two for, uh, about six block area or eight block area, and then. You just go back and forth.
And then, and then Mark just drives around, or not drives around, but he drives through there, you know, and checks things out as he's around, and he says, okay, this needs to be fixed, this needs to be fixed, and then he makes a plan of what he's gonna do. In that area. So there's five areas of town, and, uh, or, must be six or seven. So every five or six, seven years, something gets fixed. One of the sections gets fixed, so.
I think it said on here someplace, some many years or something like that, let's check. What was it?
Ten years of distribution.
Was it ten years, or ten years?
Inspection, quarry, substation.
Maybe somewhere, somewhere in here it said.
Number six.
I guess I should point out too, on, uh, the first page, three of three, it says in general. Uh, where the utility inspections conducted in a manner conducive to the identification of safety, maintenance, and reliability concerns or needs, and it says yes. So. Think Mark's doing a pretty good job. And Rick obviously helps Mark, maybe not necessarily in the electric department.
But when he's up on a pole or something like that, you should, you should definitely have two men.
Well, yeah, the reason I said that is 'cause Rick doesn't care for electricity, just like I don't, so, it's kind of an inside joke.
Shocking.
Shocking.
I don't mind helping.
So just for your guys' information on that.
Okay, moving on to pool.
I just wanna read it, the ba, the last thing, it says compliance of, of page three of three. It says, uh, one ninety-nine IAC, the, the, the numbers are in general, where utilities inspections conducted in a manner conducive to the identification of safety, maintenance, reliability, concerns, or needs. Yes, list any suggestions to improve the manner in which the utility conducts inspections and performs corrective actions and others.
I should've read that, yeah.
I just wanted to read that, so.
Right.
You know, I, just firmly, you definitely stay up on electric, because it's aging just like your big house in this town.
Okay, pool boiler. Steve Draven Gay called me, uh, Thursday it was, I think, and asked me to put this on. Um, about daily, we have a question about our boiler at the pool. Kids complaining that the pool's cold and. It's definitely an issue. This was kinda something that I was gonna try to maybe work into our, uh. Our new building. Don't really know exactly where we're at there yet, but I got some prices for you guys to look at and, uh.
I guess my point would be if it's, if it's bad.
It'd be the same place.
We shouldn't. That one knows.
We've been fighting that for about five, ten years.
My question then would be.
I need the wrong boiler to start with.
What's wrong with the old boiler, Rick?
It's rusted out on the, the top part, you know, the.
Key exchanger?
Yeah, not where the tubes come through, like we replaced that one time, now it's actually the. It's got the top part.
Where they fit into, up above?
It's rotted out to that point.
So you said you had some information that I.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at the boiler right there, there should've been a sheet on top of that, John, that had prices. Looks like this.
Alright, oh, I thought that was meters. I thought you would discover that.
Well, I took on, if you guys look at the bottom there, six thousand, five dollars, that's, that's a boiler comparable to the size that we've got now. There's been some talk that we probably don't need one that big. So if you look up just a few lines, there's a thirty-nine hundred and sixty dollar number, that's, uh. Two-hundred and eighty thousand BTU, and the one that we're looking at is four-hundred and twenty thousand. So you're about, I don't know, two-thirds, not quite two-thirds of the size. I honestly don't know what the size would be.
What was the BTU on this one?
Four-hundred and fifty?
You don't wanna undersize it.
No.
Well, we, you know, we had to choke that one down all the time too.
Because it, too much heat.
I think if you just, if you have a small one, let it run all the time, it's gonna heat the pool. We lose most of the heat at night. But if they tarp it.
They've, they've been doing that this year, and that's helped, what Robin has told me, that's helped quite a bit.
I don't think with all the rain, it's helped though, because the rain is cold, and it's just getting colder, from what the guards tell me when I go up there.
Well, the tarts ain't on every night.
But they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be.
I look everywhere and the tarts are not on, I can tell you that too, they're not.
Since Robin's been gone?
Well, before that.
Was it?
We gave them a raise last year because they were pulling the heavy tarp over the pool. Yeah, that was the explanation I got.
I don't know, but it's cold, you know, last two, I know it hasn't been a very good summer, but the last two days it's been fairly decent, and both my kids came home because they didn't wanna be at the pool. Paying our twenty-five dollars to go. I think the water, I think the water got me a little bit warmer.
Well, we definitely need the boiler. And we should go ahead and.
Now, how much of the plumbing job were you playing, so?
I mean, that's what I was looking at, how much you got here, that control, what's, what's above, what's, what are you listing up there?
That, that's not gonna end there, I don't know exactly what's gonna need to be changed, I mean, Mike hasn't. Mike hasn't gone down and actually looked at that, he got me prices for a boiler and.
Mike?
Lawler.
Is this a pool boiler?
Well, shit.
Make sure it's a pool boiler.
Oh, look, it says right here, pool heater.
Yeah, on this, this one here says pool heater, yes.
Oh, yeah, it says up here too. He knew that's what I wanted it for, I mean, I didn't.
Where was this one written, Daryl? It wasn't a pool boiler.
I don't think, a lot of boilers aren't made for this high glory and stuff, so you gotta run through this, so. Make sure it's a cool board.
Well, it says right on there.
This one, yes, but these are Lennox, this is A.L. Smith.
Here's a difference in there, yeah.
But. Look at the top. A.L. Smith Financial Gas, four-hundred and twenty thousand, top, on, in your left hand, Daryl.
That's the first price, not the sixth one.
Yeah, right, no, 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 that, six thousand is all these added together, this is.
What's that Lennox stock?
That's the thirty-nine hundred. That's a smaller one.
So that's, that's the fifty-three plus the two forty-one, one ninety-three, one seventy-four?
What's the six thousand, oh, five fifty?
That's the total of the top numbers, John.
Cause that's what I was looking at.
Know a little bit about pools, to come and see how big.
Can you call?
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea.
You know, he's always knows about here.
Agribolt and Carroll goes all the pools around here, I know, and has them in to come up.
And I don't really care. I think we should buy it down here.
Yeah.
But somebody's know, tell us what we need.
What size we need.
I guess the point I was trying to make there is we need to get on this and get it taken care of.
That's what I was gonna say. Do we wanna wait another two weeks to do it?
No, we wanna, I, I say not. I'd like to, you know, people have spent money to have a nice warm pool, a heated pool, and we don't have it, so...
I don't know. We should put a limit on how much you can spend and just prove it tonight, and...
'Cause I can get a couple of more bids. I mean...
But they, they fight them right out and tell you what you need. Or you might be able to give them the measurements, they tell you what the box they're in.
They might be.
Make sure they got the specs for the pool or somewhere.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Right in, right in my office.
I'll give you some footage and I'll tell you what you need.
Squared footage, they'll tell you what you, yeah, how big one is.
Or cubic, excuse me.
A 420 oughta be big enough. We got a 450 now.
Oh, yeah.
It should be, uh...
You mean 120?
Well, no, this, this one says it's a 420,000 BTU, and you said we got a 450 now.
Yeah, this, this A.O. Smith 420 is a 420, isn't it?
Well, that seems cheap to me, 6,000.
Yeah, it does. I thought it was a lot higher than that.
Yeah.
That's why I wanna make sure it's a pool boiler. I know it says, it's a typical...
Pool heater piping, piping.
It doesn't mean it's a pool boiler.
I talked, I talked to this guy at Rye also, and I told him what we were doing. So, I guess I would assume that he...
I suppose that last one they sold us, that little...
I think with the new boiler, you'll have to watch how, watch our chlorine pellets, too, with the new, because I think that's possibly what's breaking it down and making it disintegrate, because you're not supposed to use pellets with big pools. You can use them with home pools, but you're not...
But we use the pellets where you gotta liquid, they're like...
Nope, they don't have pellets, but...
Well, that, but I think the count's a lot higher, and it's cheaper to put it in and
have it self-feed and be done than to have the liquid that...
Injection and all that.
Right.
I don't know why they were, you remember why they were wanting pellets for that?
Well, there was 18,000 reasons why we went to pellets, but it's because liquid loses its chlorine after a while, and you don't get, and you actually don't know what you're getting when you buy it. When it comes fresh, it's 14%, but if it's been on a truck stop, at least it could be ten or a lot.
Yeah, it only will be, it's never really a lot.
'Cause it, it's not quite...
It's not the percentage.
Right. The other, the other thing is, I think it's a little, well, it's more environmentally safe, and the chlorine goes in right before it goes to the pool, so it gets diluted in the water that's going to the pool, or it'd come back through the boiler or whatever.
But they'll probably tell you not to use pellets.
On the left side, on the pool, what's the boiler?
What's that?
I said they'll probably tell you not to use pellets with a new boiler.
With the new boiler? I don't think that should make a difference, because whether it's liquid or pellet, it's not gonna, the chlorine's gonna be the same.
Because you draw out the pool.
I don't know. I mean, this was the pool people that finally sold us on the pellets.
You're saying the pellets make it all the way back to the boiler?
No.
What are you saying?
They concentrate right, when they drop right in, like all the filters and...
No, they're not supposed to be feeding into the filter. It's supposed to be feeding into the pipe that's going to the pool.
Not the end, Dave.
Goes out, from the pump?
It does.
Right at the top of the pump pipe, goes through the pump, and then goes to the pool, and when it hits the top there, is where the chlorine's supposed to be going in.
Yeah, it does.
And rather explained it to me differently.
Well, maybe she's done it differently.
Yeah, maybe that's where I'm confused, because when she explained to me, I'm like, "Why are we using pellets?" And then she said, "Well, it, you know, it feeds here," and I'm like, "Pellets are supposed to be just used for home pools, where you can drop them into a chlorine bobber, and it just sits and bobs and fills and..."
Yeah, I think that might be a different kind of pellet, too. I don't know.
Well, that's how she explained it to me when I went down there, so...
I should probably give you a tour.
I just wanna make sure it's a good boiler.
Yeah.
This one didn't last long before we got in trouble.
Do we need a motion to approve purchase of new boiler?
I move we purchase the boiler.
Put a dollar amount on it, too, Darrell, please.
With a limit of $7,000. I don't know which one we need.
So, will it be put in the pool for yet this year or next year?
This year.
I'll second it.
Put a rush on it.
Thursday.
It says 30 days or something. It says 30, it says 30 days on this here.
We won't have to tell you anything, anything about the pool. I haven't contacted on nothing.
Motion to keep in busy. For this new boiler.
Lost my phone number.
By Darrell, I'm second by John. All favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries. As it says on the bottom of this, it says 30 days, so within, somewhere, hopefully within 30 days, it'll be in there. By the time it'll be hot, then you don't need it.
Yeah.
Maybe the quotes only do good.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe the quote's good for 30 days, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, personnel.
Personnel, Austin Hartman, that's me. Rick and I met with Austin Hartman. Gave him a six-month review on things he's done. Rick had a list of things that we felt that he was doing well, and a thing, a list of things that we felt he needed to work on, and in the end, Rick and I would recommend that Austin would give a dollar raise from $9 to $10 an hour because of, number one, the experience that he brought to the job, and number two, the, the things that he's done since he's been on duty, and his enthusiasm that he's had with the work, and, and his ability to be there all the time whenever we need him, not just, and his hours are not necessarily scheduled totally through there, so...
That'll put him at what then, pardon?
That'll put him at 10. 10, yeah.
He's, he's on part-time?
Yes.
Is he eligible for any of the other, the...
Benefits, I don't think.
Benefits or any benefits, I don't know. I didn't think he was either, if he didn't work so many hours or whatever.
I know he's working a lot of hours, and in the snow time, he works a lot of hours, and then spring and fall, he doesn't work as many hours.
How many hours a week does he work?
Right now, he's doing 40 off, 35 or 40, but I want him to go down to 30.
Do we have any summer people hired extra?
Right now, we got a summer, one kid, just two weeks ago, just two weeks ago.
Yeah, about.
Catch one more.
Got an add-in this week, too.
Yeah.
Put that in form of motion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Rob, by a second by Franny, to raise Austin's wages from $9 an hour to $10 an hour. All favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries. Airport hangar, J.R. Lapel.
Well, I asked Jerry to be here tonight, and he can talk a little bit more about it, but he has asked me a couple of times about the hangar. He wants, he'd like to rent it, I think. Who's all in it? Rick, can you help me out here?
Cornbell.
Cornbell's got...
They got a couple of items in there. They could have them out from all, I mean, they got a couple of spoons in here.
Would they use the whole stall, wouldn't they?
For a couple of months, yeah. I already did their fiber off, but they're out of there. Right now, we got Bertis Pittman in one stall, Whitey's got a little bit in one stall. And we got very solid, about half a, very solid stalls and stuff, and Mark's flapping and stuff.
Is, is Vertis' stall and Whitey's stall the same thing, or is that two different ones?
Nope, Bertis got the north one. No, he hasn't paid rent in a year.
What's he all got in there yet? What's he all have in there?
Generator and stuff.
Was it three stalls? Is Jeff paid up, or you know, or?
I've never seen a rent check from anybody.
It's supposed to be out of there. We told everybody to go out.
I thought it was a year or two years ago, maybe.
Couple of years ago. I think, I, I don't wanna say that, because Vertis does, brings that generator when we need it. Until we have something to replace it with. But that doesn't need that much room.
I was gonna say.
We actually have a building sitting there, but we're getting the revenue off of it. Jerry wants to rent part of it. You want by half a stall or something, right?
Probably the whole stall.
Probably the whole one, right. I don't, I don't know why we don't rent stall out.
That's what we're doing. That's what we always used to do, though. We wanted everybody out of there one time, because we weren't getting...
We had everybody, supposed to move out.
No, we were, it was something about, something like that.
I don't know if we gave Bertie...
It wasn't much.
Yeah, I don't know if we left Bertie, he keeps his generator in there or not. I don't remember how we said that, that time, but...
If he's worth it, that we leave it in there if he's gonna let us use it.
If he's gonna let us use, that's what, yes.
Can we combine those two? Certainly should be able to combine Whitey and Vertis, shouldn't we?
I don't think, Whitey's paid rent for a long time. I don't know if anybody's gonna check on him. Nobody's paying anything.
Well, those are separate issues, and we saw it one stall and...
We're gonna, we're gonna have two stalls. One or two stalls, because there's another person in there, so it's all...
No, Vertis told me he would, he would rent it. He has no problem renting.
Who?
Vertis. I rented it. He has no problem renting.
Well, how much stuff Jeff had been sitting there?
He's got a little pickup and a couple tables and stuff, like...
He could get that out of there, too. He's got one stall where...
He's got like a quarter of a stall. He's got the quarter of one.
Third at the most, I'd say.
And I tell him to call Piddy if he wants to say, "Hey, store, you know this part of Piddy, and Piddy, we just gotta figure out the price of what we're gonna rent it for." I don't know what it's worth.
Piddy's got a big building up there, once he got...
Jeff's working out of one.
Jeff's working out of one, and you got Rob Renji working out back to the shops. Yeah.
He's got a pool.
So, when did they work?
We were getting 600 bucks a year.
That's nothing. That's 50 bucks a month.
Yeah, that's not much.
I'll call you one right now.
Okay. Now, that's, that's, that's not a whole lot.
This is kind of, out here, Bill, too, you know, that was kind of the deal at one time, like the, you know, the building, you know?
Yeah, that's, see, that's why we wanted it in, but that isn't happening.
Yeah.
So...
It's managed, because we haven't put our foot down.
Oh, yeah, and we didn't have to have mother.
Yeah. Gary, what do you think it's worth a month for a third of a hangar? One stall, yeah.
He says $5, but he loves it back over there.
All right, 6, 50 bucks a month, probably.
They're, they're not fancy by no means, but they're a good...
I'd say it's cheap.
It's dry.
110?
But for $50 a month, like this, you can...
Well, I don't know why, one stall wouldn't be worth 100 bucks a month.
It wouldn't be worth 100 bucks?
It would be, should be, I would think.
Well, I think it, you know, then they got some game, and they're either renting or they get out.
Come on, I'm paying Jody for a little shed, 50 bucks a month.
That's not a little shed. That's a big shed, I'll tell you.
12, 8.
Over 8?
8 of them in there.
That's 400 bucks a month.
Move out of the hangar when you get it.
Well, we should start to rent July 1. Send him a rent, send Whitey one for 100 bucks a month, and...
Well, no, he's not. I'd tell Whitey to get his stuff out. Doug, send Vertis one.
No, 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 I'd send Whitey a bill for 100 bucks a month.
If he doesn't want to pay it, he'll take it out.
He doesn't want to pay it, and then get out.
You do that. I'd tell him to get out.
And then it's somebody one, like Cornbell comes along and wants to rent it for a few months, 100 bucks a month.
100 bucks a month. The center one we cleaned out a couple of years ago, just for the larger projects that were coming out and...
Which one would you like?
Cornbell.
Which one, William and South one, are you going for?
He's in the north one, yes.
Okay, you want the center, so?
One of the...
One of them isn't sent out.
It's just the worst shape, one of them wall. That's getting those holes, but it's, they're a big area. I mean, there's no, there's plenty of ruin in any of those stalls and all the same stuff.
Well, he what?
I said, if he's gonna be using it for all the time and getting, are you using it for your bowling, okay? Or if you're gonna be going down there more than Whitey and Pittman and Dave, if it's, if it'll win.
Well, is one of them, one of them's not sent out, is it?
Initially, I thought the south ones, then I could, maybe, you know, I could open the doors, go, because those doors, when they open, you can't have those doors open at the same time, it'd look like. Like the north door of the south hangar, and the south door of the middle hangar, you can't have those doors open at the same time and have a doorway all the way open.
No, but you're getting one of them, so it doesn't matter. The other one won't be open.
Well, I don't know.
If they don't, you ask your neighbor nicely.
Shut the tape off, hold on.
The south one, Whitey's, Whitey and the south one, correct?
Yeah. Middle one's available right now, and I think you should just rent it right now, and then set up the other two if they want.
Another thing is, nothing should be in front of us, the building.
Right.
So, rent the stall, not the parking lot out in front of it.
Well, I make the motion that we rent the airport hangar stalls for 100 dollars a
On a first-come, first-served basis, basically? I mean, we can't, or something.
Can he want one? Can, is that?
Can I?
Could be. I don't know. Who knows?
Although, I think one can say first-come, first-served.
I'd say the first-come, first-served. I don't care if they advertise or copy you.
Well, that, that'd be, you'd have stuff all over outside.
Yeah, he, I think he wants something.
Did that, somebody, somebody make that a motion?
I'm on a motion, I don't know.
I second.
Okay. All favor, signify, say an aye. All right. Hold same sign. Motion carries.
What?
Dude, I'm just, no, I'm just throwing something out there, so if you guys ever wanna get, do something major with that area, and you wanna get rid of that hangar, or, this is what I'm on the list of, you know, I could remove that for you.
Can, can we talk about?
We would sell.
J.R.'s building, at his house now? Making sense?
We don't know if he's gonna rent one that's 100 dollars a month. That's your decision to rent.
I'd say first-come, first-served or whatever, but we have to advertise, I suppose, too, don't we?
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, since, since they've made the motion to rent the hangar, does that mean that you'll take out your building? At home?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now they have someplace to go.
Oh, yeah.
It's also a tribute tree.
You already made this one.
I told Darrell sometimes that I would do that.
From the tree?
I mean, you're saying 100 dollars a month. Does that just go monthly?
Yeah.
So, they're gonna have to, if they just pay one month and then they leave, why?
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be, yeah, yeah.
But if they don't pay the next month, they will leave.
Just like when you heard it.
Yeah.
Yeah, do I get any kind of credit because I already have five hundred dollars on my shed that I don't give a key?
No, no.
Sorry.
I love to.
We're nice, we're not that nice.
Yeah.
That way we prove liquor license for the party festival.
I was thinking that.
Okay, motion made to prove liquor license, seconded by Franny, all in favor, seconded by, saying aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carried, building permit. Is that what, frame again?
I don't know.
Well, three or four. Doc wants to expand his.
Yeah, he came in the other day, he wants a thirty foot wide instead of twenty-six now.
Can't get enough jump.
Now, is this the second building permit then, or is this a?
Actually, it's a revised, it's a revised building permit.
So I'm at, I was saying, another twenty-five dollar charge on them.
Well, Cleo and I'll have to talk about that, I guess.
Where do you see, where do you see the drawings?
There's, there's, well, there's no drawing on the first one.
Is this the back of this building?
This is on, no, this is where the garage up there, they can lot.
Oh, okay.
Cause we approved the, we approved the last meeting.
That would get some place to figure it out.
You want to do these individually? I suppose.
Last time we did them all.
We can do them all then too.
That's what we did last time, but.
Okay, and second one I got here is for what, John Meister?
Yeah, he's putting a deck on.
Says deck and pool, I don't know if there was. Someplace I read deck and pool.
Yeah, I think what he's gonna do is put a little pool on top of the deck out.
No, it looks like a, a deck alongside, the north side of the pool.
This is a deck and swimming pool, swimming pool F belt, it says, it says, stand swimming pool F belt, as we are told it is. Okay. Instead of city guidelines or whatever, yeah. Stall fifteen by twenty-four foot swimming pool, build a deck that is approximately called by ten is it?
Couple of different.
And. You got deck, okay, fifteen by ten on one side and fifteen by eight on the north side of the pool. Is this a vacant lot he's working on or what?
Who?
Uh, John. You got a deck on two sides of the pool, that's what I wondered.
Yeah.
Well, Chris must have checked it out, he says.
Yeah, Chris and Dale did these today, I don't tell.
Cause the best we are now is.
Okay, and custom. He does have a picture of that.
Yeah, you're right there.
Well, let's see, and then we got one for custom grain, expand in their office.
Let Nate Rose? King Corn, did you have a ride around?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is he on the corner or?
He's on the corner, right?
Yeah, right, so, white as shit.
He had that really nice box line in his driveway.
I seen it linked out, I was gonna run by it and there's some.
I like that stuff.
You don't, you don't have to stop now, huh?
Took one now. Center street, go to center street, that open lot. I think it's one between Kroger's and.
Oh, that old, that they started?
I don't think it's Muller's. Am I correct in saying that, Jody?
What's that?
Uh, Nate Rose. Is he between, is that between Kroger's and?
I believe so.
Or theirs?
Kroger lives right next to Laird, I mean.
Right north of Laird.
Laird, Laird and Laird.
Shark, Dick Sharp.
Okay, is that where the foundation was on?
No, that's, that's north of Shark. Yeah, we should really.
Okay.
She would really like to get. A thousand bucks above what she paid for that lot is what she really wants, not what she has in the lot.
What she has in the lot.
Well, I mean the lot itself, cause she says she knows, she knows that no way can she get what they got in it. She realizes this, but she told me that she would like a thousand more than what the lot cost. The lot didn't cost initially.
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred bucks.
Alright, where's the address?
Changed your ways.
Which one are we looking at?
Nate Rose.
Well. You're lying when you have a big wall building and that.
No, no, not you.
That's just what she told me.
Wouldn't it be North Main?
He's got post office, post office.
Yeah, I know. Kroger's living in the corner, then Ron Laird, then this is north, this is north of Ron Laird, between Ron Laird and Sharps. Basically right across the street from Jason and Federico.
Actually, it'd be seven, wouldn't it?
No, it's not seven, that would be.
Oh, seven runs the other.
Yeah, you're right, North Main, yeah. It is North Main, it is North Main. Cause, Twilight Acres Apartments is North Main.
We got a, we got a motion, but we don't have a second.
We got a motion and a second?
No.
My second.
All in favor, seconded by, saying aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign, motion carried.
Howard.
Okay. Public forum.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have a neighbor that doesn't like to mow his lawn, and it seems like the only way he gets it mowed is when he's requested to. So I'd like to see some kind of a, I don't know, he has to mow it every so often or he gets fined. If he gets, if he knows he's gonna get fined, he's gonna mow it, cause he, he acts like he walks over.
He, he was in my office the other day, and he said that he will mow his yard when your trees get trimmed. And I told him that you will trim your trees when he mows his yard, so.
My suggestion was we send the city after to trim the trees and mow the yards, and then bill you both, and then worry about this kidding talk.
Who has trees, which trees might you need to get trimmed?
The ones that are hanging on his lot evidently.
Your, your evergreen trees.
That are hanging on his lot.
Can't trim off one side of it.
That's what you should do. His point is, is that we made him trim his trees up. Now, he only thinks it's fair if somebody trims their trees up.
Well, how do you trim an evergreen?
I don't know how you do that, but. And that's just.
They are, they are on his lot, over his lot.
Well, I think some of this takes precedence before he was there.
Maybe.
He's been there a long time, you know.
It could tell where he's buying, maybe.
He's owned the house since nineteen seventy-three, almost any year since his folks.
It hasn't been built that long.
Whenever. Oh, you haven't been there in a while.
I've been there fourteen, fifteen years.
Yeah, he's been there long, cause I rented it from him sixteen years ago.
The initial builders of those two houses, initial buyers of those two houses, maybe had some, you know, maybe nothing was said about you then. And just because you re-bought the house now.
Well, his folks got the house.
They own the house.
Originally, originally it was a spec house. Originally it was a spec house.
What I'm guessing is when he just mow around, on the inside, on the, of your trees.
Yeah, but you're right.
Just make one strip, mow around it, and then he's got no complaint about your tree, so he doesn't get.
No, I think, I think, I think his, his first one, I think they, they bought it in both spec.
And once you get your stuff moved out there, and you mow around his trees, I don't know what else he's got to complain about.
Christian lived in there for a little bit.
Your stuff that you park on the street there, that's one of his first.
We should resolve that tonight.
What's that do?
Principal?
When you put all your parking, all your stuff in the search. I understand, but that's a complaint.
I think he was.
Once that stuff gets moved, and if you mow a strip on the outside, on his side of the trees up.
Okay, well, I'm just kidding, okay, I got two vehicles to sell his tree, I have to move those vehicles out?
We can't talk logic here, don't you understand that? No, it doesn't, it's no logic, but when you move your stuff, you know, and you get your stuff so you're not all parked around in the circle up there. Down there, and then if you mow one strip around his trees, then what else he's got to go? And we'll send somebody up there, mow his lawn, or move building. If he gets within the.
Much money and.
Which is probably approaching.
We're gonna get another one.
When do we have to do something?
I have no problem, I said, if somebody up there. I don't have a problem, I know us enough, they're not building.
Every time, he won't mow this.
It should be.
He said, I'm getting tired of having to go through the city.
Cause we should put a road in there.
Yeah, if we're getting seventy-five dollars a year, and I brought.
True. Well, he thinks that you park in the circle, it irritates him too.
It irritates him, there's no stopping the conversation.
It's a vicious circle.
Anybody can park in the circle.
JR, JR, we're just telling you the stuff that irritates him.
We're gonna bring this bunch in next year again, so.
I think I move my bigger out, and he gets out of the garage, went down and parked the right one, and then he went back in the house.
We could do, we could still do.
I understand, I rented it for six months, and I don't know how much it's, but we can, we can sure sell one.
We're just telling you what. Hell, I think he put.
What his issues are, not all of them, but some of them. You haven't tested.
Do by the bank or something.
I move a journey.
No.
No?
No, can't do that.
Can't adjourn.
I got, I got a couple of things that I wanna talk about.
The public forum.
Um, I already talked about the ombudsman, Angela McBride said that we're in good shape. Uh, we need to advertise for Michelle's job, so I got a advertisement from the paper and I reworded a little bit. Uh, says applicants must have an understanding of govern, governmental accounting, finances and city policies. Uh, this includes cities' general accounting and operations of natural gas, electric, water, sewer and garbage. Advanced computer skills are a must and ten key is a plus. The applicant must be able to respond to public concerns to facilitate a positive community environment. You guys think we should add anything to that, do you wanna see it?
Well, I'd turn that around, the ten keys a must and the computer skills is a plus.
Well, we can change that. Michelle and I kinda just.
Probably shouldn't.
Changed this, or put this together the other day.
I think that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, we'll put that in the paper tomorrow then. That's all I've got for the public forum, I think John's got something.
Real quick cafeteria plan, did they get anything come back to us?
Um, I asked, somebody asked the question about, uh, what happens to the money that goes back to the company. Uh, whatever we put in there, whatever the employee says they want put into the account. If it's twelve hundred dollars a year, if there's a thousand dollars of that left, it comes back to the city. Um, and the fee, we talked about last time, is three hundred and fifty dollar one time setup fee, and then thirty-one dollars a month. Thirty-one and a quarter, I think, was the exact amount.
Per person or for the?
No, that's for the company. Well, in, in two thousand and thirteen, there's gonna be new IRS rules that say that four hundred dollars a month that you get. Will be taxed unless we do it a different way, unless we, the city pays the employee an extra four hundred dollars a month. And then we say what we want to go into that account, whether it be.
Paying thirty-one dollars a month tax on it, when it became somebody else who will tell them.
But can they still designate the four hundred dollars toward insurance?
Yep.
You will be paying the thirty.
Basically, it has to go that way.
But that's where all the.
Alright, this is the other topic, just throw this out for discussion, I know Francis and I talked about it a little bit. In our road use fund, we got a hundred and two thousand right now, and we got, we brought in seventy thousand dollars in road use payments. Our, our, um, population went down from four, or eight forty, forty, eight nineteen, so our road use is gonna decline a little, but it's still gonna be close to seventy. So my suggestion was to think about that road use money to build that new street up there in the residential area.
As long as you don't nick that. Girls need to nick that.
Well, I, I went around and looked at the streets, probably years from north of your house is about the worst one.
Yeah, well, we was gonna do it last time, but I said, oh, you can skip that one, it's only a block long.
Yeah, I know, but it's getting pretty bad.
You should have went in.
What do you think we should, I mean, do you think we should grind it down in your years of meeting or?
I would, I don't think you should ever lay on top anymore.
No, I think, I think.
There ain't enough left of his to do it.
Yeah, I can't imagine.
The one by the bank too is getting pretty bad.
Yeah, and then the other one is, a short one between, uh, First Avenue there.
Yeah, right, block down. Those two short lots.
The corner on First Street is bad, that's county, is it almost, or is that ours?
Half of it's ours. So much footage is theirs, a little rest, but it's ours. With center sixteen feet or something like that.
Do you have any other places in town, I, I didn't look at every street, east side town I go looking down didn't look too bad.
Most of it, most of them are pretty good, except for one in front of the back. It's getting real bad.
Two over there.
East side, you may have to seal code.
Yeah, put them all the way up to the store though, too.
If that starts going in real quick. Yeah.
Yeah, probably would hurt to start over there again, we haven't done that for a long time.
Well, we seal coded, we did that side strips and sealed coded it.
Yeah, but that, how long goes that, ten years?
Time flies now.
Where, where's that at, you know?
On the whole east side of town, when they seal coded that.
Numbers are pretty decent yet.
Yeah, but they'll start knowing, cause I know a seal code's starting to wear off, and you're starting to see where we turned them. Before we seal coded it, so it will break.
Is that, is that where you put the coat on and put the gravel on top?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't like it, but I think in order to save that in town, you may have to do it again. Cause we won't have the finances to do that all.
Other places do, I can have some.
Yeah.
That's concrete, isn't it?
No. We got a patch code.
That corner. Yeah.
Also wouldn't go up the hill by any Williams, that's.
Last corner.
That's staying pretty good, it's got some spots that sunk a little bit with.
It sunk away.
All in all, it's staying pretty solid, except from the hills, from our office on down is where it's ready to get.
I think we can have that concrete, I don't know what these guys are doing.
Uh, we should, uh, definitely get some maintenance on the stuff that we wanna do. So that, yeah, so that we can look at what the, the cost of that would be, so we can look at this too.
I think we should also look into the cost versus concrete.
We've always done it in the past, but we, they happen to do an accounting project or something, and we get in trouble for that money, but. I think I asked Mike this spring about it, he was like, they're willing to begin the county doing the projects this year, so he would probably tell us. Somebody could get ahold of him, stop him, their supervisor in this area and see if they are.
Okay.
Well, that will be concrete probably.
Yeah.
Ask me.
Probably just accounting, I mean.
Concrete doesn't much higher than.
Did we decide on that last plan you have, or is it gonna offer whatever that is?
Well, that's the cheapest one.
Yeah, that would be the, that makes the most sense, really.
I think it does.
Got a last plan from last month?
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, go east and then straight north, and just be a dead end right now.
But it leaves right for utilities too.
Yeah.
I mean, the lots can, we have to move one, that's an old line anyways.
We get some way back from the alfalfa we put in there.
You're gonna have to spray that alfalfa real quick. Weeds growing in there, I thought.
Oh, that's something else.
Bill on today.
I, I, I.
Partway through, at least through.
I talked to John's helper, but I think we should have him.
New area.
Level off that dirt that is out by our lagoon road, before all those cottonwoods get too tall, those over.
John.
Healy, I want him to get a price on it, he must forgot telling.
Down here?
Yeah, down by the airport. The road going to the lagoons, all those cottonwoods coming up, we need to level that off, so at least we can chop it down without more or something.
They really need to do it on the airport too, that one hill of stuff.
But those trees, if you let that go another year, they grow fast.
We should possibly see if they can, they can take and push that concrete pile back further south.
Very good.
Well.
Do we need it anymore?
Well, we kept it for the land, for the, uh.
Yeah, but we're done.
Are you done with the crest, that crest in there?
I don't think we need any.
Oh, we, we need a little.
Well, I could certainly haul off a couple of those.
Across the city, we really have it.
Uh, you know, you could always use that up and.
We'll make out a deal with you.
We'll see, we'll think about that.
You trim your trees.
Yeah.
You work with us here, we'll take care of you there.
Well, I move your dirt.
Daryl wants that dirt bad.
Moved and seconded adjourned, all in favor, seconded by, saying aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign?
If you wanna rent it.
Motion carries.